Jesus my Lord and my God, if you ever run in the fire of evil and shatter, He gives my clear ransom, my soul, now I belong to Him. Now I belong to Jesus, Jesus belongs to me. And for the years of time alone, and for eternity. Once I was lost in sins and degradation, Jesus came down to bring me salvation, and lifted me up from sorrow and shame, now I belong to Him. Now I belong to Jesus, Jesus belongs to me. And for the years of time alone, and for eternity. Joy floods my soul for Jesus has saved me, bringed me from sin and long had it slaved me. His presence, blood He gave to redeem, now I belong to Him. Now I belong to Jesus, Jesus belongs...
On this your Lord's day, Lord, and just hear your word expounded upon, Lord, and to sing these praises to you.
Thank you.
We thank you for the fellowship that we feel here and the time that we get to spend with one another. Lord, we pray for those that are sick and those that are traveling, that you'd give traveling mercies. We ask now that you'd be with the ones that are going to teach lessons this morning, that you'd give them the words that you have them to say. And Lord, just bring power to your word and give us ears and eyes to see and hear. We pray all of these things now in Jesus' precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Hymn number four hundred eighty-nine, four hundred eighty-nine.
Down at the cross where my Savior died, down where for plenty from sin I cried. There to my heart was the blood of life, glory to His name, glory to His name, glory to His name. There to my heart was the blood of life, glory to His name. I am so one freshly saved from sin, Jesus just sweetly appears within. There chapter 11, where the Lord is seen. Glory to His name, glory to His name, glory to His name. There to my heart was the blood of life, glory to His name. Oh precious ground, and that saves from sin, I am so glad I have entered in. There Jesus saves me and keeps me clean, glory to His name, glory to His name, glory to His name. There to my heart was the blood of life, glory to His name. Come to this land, it's so pleasant and sweet, cast away your soul at the Savior's feet. One to today and be then complete, glory to His name, glory to His name, glory to His name. There to my heart was the blood of life, glory to His name.
Hymn number one hundred sixty-one, one hundred sixty-one.
Oh spread the tides around, wherever man is found, clear every hymn is on his head, he is a sinner now. When every Christian's tongue proclaim the joyful sound, the Comforter has come. The Comforter has come, the Comforter has come, the Holy Ghost is here, the Father is from his King. Oh spread the tides around, wherever man is found, the Comforter has come. The mortal that is dead, the Lord he makes him last, and does the dreadful will, and fury of the last. As though the golden hills, the day he bends his ass, the Comforter has come. The Comforter has come, the Comforter has come, the Holy Ghost is here, the Father is from his King. Oh spread the tides around, wherever man is found, the Comforter has come. Oh brave the king kings, within the digital space, do every captain's soul, the full deliverance praise. And clear the banks of hell, a song of pride and praise, the Comforter has come. The Comforter has come, the Comforter has come, the Holy Ghost is here, the Father is from his King. Oh spread the tides around, wherever man is found, the Comforter has come. Oh thou is love divine, and thou shalt is not a wine, to wandering mortals tell, the master's grace divine. That I which round the veil, stood in his nation shining, the Comforter has come. The Comforter has come, the Comforter has come, the Holy Ghost is here, the Father is from his King. Oh spread the tides around, wherever man is found, the Comforter has come.
You may be seated, I don't need to introduce Brother Joel, I just wanted to say how happy I am to see Mrs. Florence.
Amen, me too.
She wants to be here, hasn't been able to be, and she's here today, and I'm so glad to that.
Amen.
Praise the Lord for that, but you know, the jockey.
I don't know if you looked at your bulletin today, but I've got something that I see, and then you've got men's breakfast, that's good.
Oh yeah, bacon.
If it's free breakfast or if that's paid for, it's still good. Ladies' Java chat, that's how much you're drinking coffee, that's good. I kind of take offense to the fifty-five plus thing, it makes me feel cold over there.
Ain't there yet.
And then I love that, how many people have listened or have any video plays, mobile plays, country's recent month of March, thirteen countries reached? And a number of people, apparently, outside of this congregation tuned in to hear what's going on here.
Amen.
I want to point that out for this reason. If you're not careful, you'll measure what's going on by what's just right in front.
Yep.
And you really, if you do that, you're really measuring a short sighted measure. I don't think that's really an accurate measure. God, God does a work that's beyond what our abilities are and really beyond what our view is, what we see. And so I just, I praise the Lord if you've got people listening to you, and they said, Son, John's got something to say there, how about that? Or they like the music. So this morning for Sunday, so I'm going to teach, I'm not preaching, and if that's what you, I hope that's okay. So if you're quick, I want you to go to Second Timothy just a minute. How many of you believe the King James Bible is workable?
Amen.
So if I say Turner, Second Timothy.
We know, invite me where we're going.
We know where we're going.
Two fifteen.
I'm not going to go where you think. And I do want to say this, I do believe the King James Bible is workable, and I think it is preserved. I believe that because the Bible says that in itself in Psalm twelve. If it's every word, I don't think it's just a meaning, right? So I do believe in inspiration, I believe the word inspiration that's used here, that God says all Scripture is given by inspiration of God. And Jesus qualified what Scripture was. You can see Scripture, in other words, copies of what God gave to the Ethiopian unit that bought the scroll of Isaiah down in Jerusalem, when Jesus preached from the scroll of Isaiah in the synagogue. And I'm just saying that I believe that. But if you look, let's just read verse fifteen and sixteen. And that the child has known the Holy Scripture, which is able to make me wise and salvation through faith, which is in Christ Jesus. All Scripture is given by inspiration of God, is proper for doctrine, for truth, for correction, for instruction in righteousness, that man of God may be perfect. Truly furnished in all good works. And what I want to say about that this morning is this, there are all kinds of ways and means to study your Bible. And I know that who I'm speaking to today, I know you read your Bible, I'm sure you're encouraged to read your Bible every day. I think y'all read it every day. We eat physically every day, most of us, we should eat spiritually every day. But you know, studying the Bible and reading the Bible are two different things. Hearing the Bible preached and studying the Bible are two different things. Reading a book about the Bible, like a commentary, and actually studying the Bible are two different things. And what I want you to note here is, there is a principle that we use when studying the Bible, the study of hermeneutics, alright? And one of those principles is the application principle. And I think it's right here in one of the strongest passages on inspiration in the Bible, and I want you to just note this. So in verse sixteen, all Scripture is given by inspiration of God, is proper for doctrine. So every Scripture has a doctrinal application. In other words, every Scripture has a reason why God had that Scripture pinned down. And I really think it's a mistake to take the Bible and bring it down to the level of our culture and the way people think during the day.
Come on.
I think it should be just the opposite. I think we should bring the culture and the lifestyle of the day and bring it up to what God wrote in the Bible. Because what He wrote, He wrote for a purpose, right? When He says doctrine, God had a specific thing in mind in every passage of Scripture that He wrote. And that's not up to you, that's not up to me. That is something that He wrote, that's not up to Paul. I know that many times you've said, well, Paul wrote the book in Second Timothy. Paul did not write the book in Second Timothy. God used Paul's hand to write the book in Second Timothy. But Paul didn't write Second Timothy. God is the author of Scripture, also is given by inspiration of God, and it's about for doctrine. That's the first thing you have to get. If we're going to apply the Bible right, number one, we have to understand that it is a doctrinal application that should precede everything else. So if I don't get the doctrine right, then I'm going to get other things wrong.
Just saying.
The second thing though is this, the second thing is, all Scripture is given by inspiration of God, is proper for doctrine, for truth, for correction, watch, for instruction in righteousness. Every, every Scripture has a practical application, every Scripture. God wrote the Bible for a year and a half to learn, not only, not only to understand doctrine, but to be an example to us. Romans fifteen talks about that very thing, that the things that happened unto them are an example unto us. We learn from the suffering of Job, we learn from the challenges that Moses faced in the tomb of Israel and wilderness. We learn from those things. So it has a practical application. Every Scripture can be practically applied to your life and to my life. And that is another application that you use when it comes to the Bible. The third one is back up in verse fifteen. Look at verse fifteen. And that the child has known the Holy Scripture. Who's being spoken to in verse fifteen? Somebody tell me, it's Sunday school.
Timothy.
Timothy, alright? So was there a day that Timothy knew the Holy Scriptures as a child? So that is a historical fact. Every Scripture has a historical basis. It's all written in a period of time. So in other words, when I look at the Bible, Timothy, from a child, had the Holy, he had a copy of the Old Testament, he had a copy of the words of God. He did not have a King James Bible, he did not have sixty-six books. He had the Scripture, and he knew them from a child. So mom taught Timothy the Bible from a child. Timothy's dad was a Greek, his mother was a Jewish, alright? She was a believer. And Lois, mom's mother, was a believer as well. And so the Bible is very clear that there is a moment in time that historically, the Bible was written, and written here about Timothy knowing the Scripture from a child. So there's three things I've said. Number one, all Scripture is given by inspiration, is proper for doctrine. So every passage has a doctrinal application, alright? Secondly, every Scripture has a practical application, and the Bible is very clear, that instruction in righteousness. And thirdly, every Scripture has a historical application, alright? How many of you understand why I said so, Paul? How many of you already do that already? Alright, so if you already do that already, great, brother Don's doing his channel, alright now. I want you to jump on there, I want to go to Revelation chapter one, Revelation chapter one. So I want to put this into practice for just a moment, and look and see, what does that really mean then when it comes to the Scripture? Okay, what it means to cover. In Revelation chapter, and I say one, I mean chapter three, let's go to chapter three. So Revelation chapter three, verse number seven, into the angel of the church of Philadelphia, write. Alright, the first thing I want you to understand is when he says, write to the angel of the church of Philadelphia. I understand people use this to show different periods of church history. I don't know that I necessarily agree with that. But I will say this, I will say that it is a certainty that God had this written to the church of Philadelphia. Go back to chapter one, I'm just showing them talking about, because it says, that speaking in verse number eleven, and send it unto the churches which are in Asia. So Philadelphia was a church in Asia. Historically, that was something that they received from John in Asia. And they heard it, and it was the word of God, and we have that today. But that happened historically. That was a church in history, in time, okay? You can do whatever else you want to do with that, but you have, you have to acknowledge that that was written to a specific group of people that lived in Asia, not America.
Go on, just saying.
They didn't have Seabrood or Sables, no, didn't have the internet. So when you look at what's written, you can't Americanize the moment in which it was written. It was written to a specific church in history. But it also has a great doctrinal application. The reason I say that, if you look what the Bible says in speaking about Jesus Christ, look at the doctrine. And to the church of the angels, Philadelphia, write, these things say, he that is holy. Jesus is holy. He's holy in his birth, he's holy in his life, he was holy in his death, he is holy. Whatever else you want to say. People today, I saw a clip of a man that said that God does not usually use righteous people to get his work done. What did he say? And he had this real deep voice that was engaging. He said, usually when God does his work, he finds somebody that is all messed up, and then he does something with them. And my mind thought, well, you cannot be talking about Jesus Christ because he's holy. Alright, one thing is, the Bible says he's holy, but what is it? He is true. Jesus Christ is the truth. He's the true light, the true vine. His judgment is true, he's the only true God. Doctrinally speaking, Jesus is the truth, alright? And then it says, he that is holy, he that is true, he that hath the keys of David. He that openeth, and no man shutteth, and shutteth, and no man openeth. So he has the keys. You can look up, there are a lot of keys doctrinally. Jesus has the keys of hell and death. What, I give an amen on that right?
Amen.
The keys of hell and death. That's from Revelation one eighteen. Talks about the keys of knowledge that the lawyers take away in Luke chapter eleven. But the keys of David, he's holy, the household of David. And I want to say that is a doctrinal truth. Jesus Christ was a Jew. There are men today that teach that God is through with the Jews, and that the Jews are the enemies of the gospel. That's only quoting part of a verse in Romans eleven. The rest of the verse says that they are beloved for the election, alright? The Jews are still God's chosen.
Amen.
Jesus is a Jew. Jesus has the keys of a throne in the kingdom of David. Jesus is not going to set up an American government. He is going to set up a Jewish government.
Yep.
He is going to set it up in Israel. I had a guy one time stop in the airport, I had a, I had a scripture jacket on him, and he said, oh, I like scripture jackets. He said, uh, he said, what color was Jesus? I said, what? He said, what color was Jesus? I said, Jesus was a Jew. He said, no, what? So I said, he was. I would give this his genealogy. And then he went to tell me that Jesus was like him, his skin color.
Yep.
We have all kinds of paintings from the fif, you know, back in the, from Europe, back in the days of all the dark, dark ages there. Jesus is a white Anglo-Saxon redheaded Protestant male hanging on a cross. They made Jesus like them.
Yep.
Jesus is not like you, Jesus is a Jew.
Come on.
Jesus was holy, Jesus was sinless, Jesus was the truth. So what I'm saying is, that whatever you get from this church, historically, doctrinally, there's some things that are being spoken that are unequivocally true doctrinally. Doctrine, God wrote it to that room. Look that little bit farther. Then he says this, he that openeth, no man shutteth, and shutteth, and no man openeth. So Jesus can open doors that no man can shut, can shut doors that no man can open. There's great application in that. God can be of opportunity where opportunity does not exist.
Yep.
Now he did that physically. Think about it for a minute. When Peter was in prison, did God open the door without the key? To the point that Peter thought he was seeing a vision. And God had to take him, touch him on the side, wake him up, say, hey, listen, this is, get up, put your shoes on, you're going out. Even the church that's praying, they're begging God, they're, they're, they are at Lucas House, they're, please spare Peter. He knocks at the door, and they go to the door, don't even believe it's him, they say, well, it must be a ghost, it's the spirit, finally. How can they let him in? They're praying something they don't even believe. But God opens a door, he does the same thing in Acts chapter sixteen, when Paul and Silas were there praying. He opens the door. I'm just saying, God can open a door. I remember a missionary that wanted to go to East Germany. And you know, East Germany at the time was underneath Soviet control. How many of y'all remember when there was a Soviet Union? There's no way you guys remember that. There was a time when there was a Soviet Union, alright? They controlled all of these different countries because of World War II's end, and then they split Germany in half, East Germany on this side, West Germany on this side. Well, this guy said that God had called him to be a missionary in East Germany. And he went around telling churches that, and they said, well, you can't be a missionary in East Germany, East Germany's a closed country. And he said, well, I understand that, that's where God wants me to go. And they wouldn't support him. And he'd been on the road for, I mean, a long time trying to raise money, hadn't raised nearly what he needed. And finally, his pastor said, are you sure God wants you to go to East Germany? And he said, I am. He said, then you just need to go without support. That's not something they teach you in Bible college. So he went without support to a communist country. Why, how are you going to get in? My mama get in. So he's living in West Germany, and he's, he wants to smuggle Bibles into Eastern. So he fills up his car with Bibles, and he goes to a checkpoint. This is what they teach you in Bible college, doesn't it? And when he gets to the checkpoint, the guy opens and says, insert your card. Opens his trunk, he says, what's that? He says, those are Bibles. He said, what are you going to do? He said, I'll go over there and I'll give them to people. And then he's got a bunch of bananas right there. He said, what are those? He said, those are bananas. He said, what are you going to do with those? He said, what do you want me to do with them? He said, you give them to me. So he gave the bananas, let him go into East Germany, let him give out Bibles, and he turned around, he came back, and he started a Bible smuggling business on the basis of bananas.
He was bananas.
They don't teach that in Bible college. Then one day, he came across a building just on the inside of the border that was for sale, and could not believe the amount of money that was sold. He called his pastor, pastor, there is a building here in East Germany that they're selling, and it's a great church. Now mind, it's still, the wall is still up. What do you think that guy should do? He said, buy it. So he bought a building in East Germany to have church in, after sneaking in Bibles by giving a garb bananas. And listen, when the wall came down, he was one of the first people in the country to hang a sign outside of a building that said that there was a Baptist church that was preaching the gospel to people.
Amen.
Now, here's what I'm saying. God can open, that is a practical application. God can open a door that a man can't open. God can shut a door. I heard people say, well, you know, you can push the door down and you can go inside, not a God's got to shut you. I read about that in the book of Genesis, when God shut the door, nobody was able to get into that door. God can shut a door that no man can get in. And what I'm trying to get you to understand right now is, it is a very practical thing. And it's also, if you continue to look, look at verse eight, and we could continue going through this whole passage. I know thy words, behold, I have sent before thee an open door, and no man can shut it. So he opened the door for them, and then he says this, for thou hast a little strength, and hast kept my word, and has not denied my name. Now how about that? God gave a great door of opportunity to people that only had a little bit of strength. Well, that sounds backwards. If I'm going to open a door of great opportunity, I would open it to people that have the means and the resources to get the job done. If we go over and purchase a great good piece of ground here, which I understand that, I guess property here is what, maybe, I don't know, a couple thousand dollars an acre, is that about right? A hundred, two thousand dollars an acre? Hundreds of thousand dollars, yeah. So if I go out and I buy fifty acres, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars an acre, hopefully I've got something to do, to put on that amount of property. I'm not going to buy that property and say, well, I just don't have anything left to be able to do anything on it, I'm just out. He opens the door for people that have just a little bit of strength. I wouldn't that applies to anybody here today. I'm tired, I'm weak. I guess I need to just quit trying to do whatever God set in front of me. You know, Gideon, to me, there are things in the Bible that are funny. Gideon is hiding because he's afraid and he's stressing weak, and he's throwing it up, and he's letting the wind blow the chapel away so he can get the stuff. But he's hiding doing it, and while he's doing that, God comes to him and he says, Gideon, thou mighty man of power.
And hiding.
You're talking to me? You're talking to you. I'm, I'm here and I'm, I'm hiding, I'm hiding, I'm looking, I mean, I'm hiding. Gideon, thou mighty man of power. God saw something in him that he didn't see himself. Was God wrong? But is it true that Gideon was hardly afraid? Absolutely. And what I'm saying is that God says in this passage, look, you've only got a little strength, but I still open the door.
Amen.
And it's a big door for you to go through.
Thank you, Lord.
Now many people talk about this being Philadelphia church age, whether that is or not, I, I just, I'm just going to tell you that from a biblical position, historically, this happened. Doctrinally, God had truths that he wanted to communicate. But then he also wants you and I to take a practical application from it. I kind of get a little frustrated hearing men defend the King James Bible, but then really not asking people to apply the King James Bible to their life. We need to be more than champions of a Bible, we need to take and apply that Bible to our life. So I got one other thing I want to give you, and I know that the verse was already gotten all this taken care of, but I'm just going to give you these anyway. So look, let me give you about five or six things real quick that will help you apply the Bible to yourself, okay? Here's the first one. First thing I'd tell you is this, when you're reading a passage of Scripture and you want to apply, now remember, doctrinal, historical, practical. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to get the context of the passage. The way I get the context of the passage, I read ten verses up, I read ten verses down, I look at the body, the painting, the picture. Context would be like, that Context would be like that picture on the wall right there. Look at that picture on the wall, alright? Brother, what is that painting?
It's the American flag, it's all a bunch of different pictures I'm making up.
So, that's an American flag?
Yes.
Made up of people, that's right.
I think that picture's, I think that picture's about stars. Are there stars in that picture?
Mm-hmm.
Did I just pick that out of a picture?
Yep.
Is the picture about stars?
That's a bigger context.
They're in there.
They're in there, yeah.
But that's not what the guy made the picture for. He made the picture to be an American flag that has gotten, and I'm guessing that there's little faces of all kind of people underneath it.
That's right.
So, he's trying to make a statement that, look, that we're one country, that we're a united country, that the flag of the United States of America. But I could, or I could say this, I could say, Brother Don, pick something else out of that picture, anything.
The stripes.
That picture's about stripes. Well, it's got one, two, three, four, five stripes in it. But is that picture about stripes? So, when somebody picks a, like that, like I took, the guy that wants to say that God's through with the Jewish people, when he says that they are the enemies of the gospel, he took one phrase out of an entire section that is really dealing with God's people being the Jewish people, and he didn't keep it in the picture. So, whenever you're looking at applying a passage, the first thing you've gotta do is get the context. Don't just look at the verse, "I'm not against textual preaching, I'm not against topical preaching," but I think that you need to get the context of the passage. If you want to apply it, understand the picture that God is drawing. Second thing, put yourself in the picture. Put yourself in the picture. You can do that a number of ways. You could put the picture of Grace Baptist Church in Revelation, chapter three. You can do that. You could put yourself as an individual in Revelation, chapter three. You could put your family in Revelation, practically speaking. You can make the application, "We don't have much strength, but God's given us an opportunity, we've got a work that we need to do." And all I'm just saying is, is that look at yourself in the passage. Put yourself in the passage. The next thing, third thing, define words that you don't understand. I don't know if I'm gonna do this or not, but if you look down at the end of the chapter here, look, there, I use a dictionary all the time when I prepare any messages when I'm reading my Bible, alright? And here's one. If you look down through there, most every word in Revelation, chapter three, is a word that we, most of us would know, until you get down to verse number, where? Verse number nineteen, "As many as I love, I rebuke." How many think you know what that word means? You know what that word means, okay? "And chasten," how many think you know what that word means? Okay, pretty good, alright? "Be zealous therefore, and repent." One of them, there'd be a lot of debate about that last word, "pennet." But what about the word zealous? Do you know what the word zealous means? Well, I think I do. Okay, well, what does it mean? If I stand up and give you a dictionary, there doesn't have the word zealous. Who's got that? Alright, go ahead, John. Alright, wait, 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 I've got my dictionary open, I just wanna make sure that we're consistent on it.
Eighteen twenty-eight?
It is a fanatical adherence to a set of beliefs or ideas or a conviction.
Well, I'm sorry.
You reading that or something? That guy got one of them brains.
I don't see the word fanatic anywhere in the passage there. So, here's what it says, it just says, "Mark thy fervent partisanship for a person, a cause, or an ideal."
I think it was zealot.
That's what zealous means. So, when I'm looking at a passage, I can't really apply it properly if I don't know what every word in the passage means. I have an idea because I can use words that I know. This brother just said the word zealot. Zealot and zealous are two different words.
Yep.
So, I'm saying, if you're gonna apply the passage, you have to look up the Bible, and that just means this, just don't be lazy and decide that a word means something that doesn't mean, alright? Figure out what it means. Here's what it means, I gotta go look that up. Alright, fourth thing. Spend a little time meditating on the passage. I think one of the greatest ways to get something out of the Bible, listen, and I have for years been an advocate of reading your Bible through, alright? And to the point to how I know how many chapters you have to read in the Old Testament, how many you have to read in the New Testament?
Three.
A day to be able to read your Bible through, even, okay? I'm not against reading your Bible through. I know some people that have read it through everywhere. But there's a difference between reading your Bible and meditating on your Bible. I really think a lot of times when we say we're having our devotions, and this is probably not you, this is probably just me confessing my own inadversity. I know as a pastor, I'm supposed to read my Bible every day, so I got thirty meetings today. I have all kinds of stuff that I've gotta get done, so I'm gonna grab my Bible, and I'm gonna flip over the proverbs of the day. Today is the, I can't read my clock, so what is it?
Proverbs.
So, I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna go to Proverbs twenty-seven, I know it's in Proverbs twenty-seven, there's a lot in there about friends in Proverbs twenty-seven, so boom, I'm gonna read that, and then when I check off my, I'm gonna say, "Out the door." Or, or I'm gonna grab my Bible, and I've got other things going on, and I'm gonna try to be flipping through it, or I'm gonna put my Bible on audio while I'm still, you know, trying to take and shave and do this, I'm gonna listen to it, so I can get the three chapters that I'm supposed to. There's a big difference between reading your Bible and meditating on your Bible. And when you wanna get a really helpful application, which I believe is devotion, God's speaking, not just doctrinally, but practically, about something that you can do with the Scripture you read, then you meditate on it. This is another example, then just pray about what you've read. Ask God to teach you something. Pray about it. Well, I'm gonna call a pastor, he can tell me. Alright, I'm gonna grab a commentary. Have it, let's just try this out. I'm looking at that clock, it doesn't say stop yet, so when Tom's on, he puts up there, "You are finished now." How many of you would agree that we have a Bible that is alive?
Amen.
The Living Word. Would you further agree that the author is living? How many of you would agree that not only is the author living, but he is accessible? And you can talk to him? I have no idea, John, but what's one of your favorite authors? What are your favorite authors?
Shelby Fudd.
Shelby Fudd, is he living?
No.
Okay, well, can you talk to him?
No.
That's right. There's no way he can know what Shelby Fudd meant in a certain passage they wrote, look. Give me a living author. Be careful, one thing, this is going out on the internet, so.
Ian Toll.
Who?
Ian Toll.
Ian who?
Toll.
Okay, so Ian, is Ian living? Can you call him? If you called him, what would happen?
See, if caller ID, he probably won't pick up.
He might respond.
He might write, you might get a, just what we would call a standard letter response. "Thank you so much for your interest in my books, da-da-da, please keep reading them, da-da-da." That is not what we have with the Bible.
Amen.
What we have with the Bible is an author that is living and is accessible, and you can go to him and say, "Hey, listen, can you help me with this passage right here, because I'm really having a hard time applying that to my life?" And he might give you something, maybe not doctrinally, but practically, that could really help you or your family, or your friends, or whoever, your Sunday school class, your church, the people you work with, he could give you something practically. And then I think, I have fifty, I have forty, I have thirty seconds left.
Six minutes.
Look for the doctrinal truths in the passage that you need to apply to your life. It could be a command from God, it could be a, it could be a responsibility, it could be a principle, it could be a promise, it could be a number of things, but it would be something that you can find in the passage that you can say, "Look, this is a, this is a doctrinal truth that I can apply to my life." You say, "Well, how would you do that in chapter three?" Well, like I mentioned to you in the beginning, the Bible says that he is holy and that he is true. You know, if the Lord is holy, and I'm supposed to represent Him, I probably ought to take inventory of my own life, how clean am I living? And I know that's not popular today, but we're not really trying to figure out where people are in relation to the Bible, we're trying to figure out how to apply the Bible to where I am in my life, and let God instruct me. So, the application principle, every Scripture has a doctrinal application, every Scripture has a practical application, every Scripture has a historical application. And when you note, when you look at your Bible and you begin breaking it down that way, then the Bible, I think, comes alive for us. Do I believe in inspiration? Yes. Do I believe in preservation? Yes. Do I believe in the verbal, plenary inspiration of the King James Bible? Yes. But I also believe that God gave us this book, like my friend James Lott, he put it in my hand, I cannot get it out of my mind. Does anybody know what the Bible, anybody know the acronym for Bible?
Basic instructions before leaving earth?
That's exactly what he said. Basic instructions before leaving earth. And it just stuck. It stuck. So, the Bible is more than just a doctrinal book we carry around. It should be something that affects our life. Alright, any questions? Oh, Tom just did it, he said, "Okay, bye, leave now."
Thank you, Lord.